Scott, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Wonderful, Nancy, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, Nancy, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, the Zoom wasn't working, so I just felt...
Sure, I think the Zoom is coming back up now. And Nancy, do you have Nancy also?
I want to go.
So I have Scott and Nancy.
Okay, I think we've sorted out the issues for now. We have to get back in touch with our AV guys tomorrow, but we're connected and recording and streaming.
All right, we're going to try this again. I'm going to ask everyone to rise for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. And in our moment of silence, I would like us to acknowledge the hardship that Councilman Mike Yeager and his family are going through with the loss of his father last night.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, justice for all.
Do you want to do your announcement as to...
As we... As was stated before, we had a very brief executive session on the potential sale of the property at 38 Hillcrest Avenue. In addition, we briefly, very briefly discussed lawsuit that the borough was served with today from Don Rice, from Sam Stratt and his attorney to the borough.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We will be adding a motion to accept the offer for the property at 38 Hillcrest. And I'm assuming that will be 8I. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Revella? Mr. Bowers?
Here.
Ms. Alaha?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Paul?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Here.
And Mr. Yeager is not here, correct?
Correct.
All right, and our solicitor, Randy Flagler? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does it say yes?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to announcements. And 3A, we have the crowning of Mr. and Mrs. and Ms. Winterfest.
Okay. Is this on? Yes, no?
It should be. You might have to get a little closer.
I can talk pretty loud, so. Good evening, my name is Donna Wilson. I'm the chairperson for the 2021 Marshall Winterfest Parade. This year's Marshall Winterfest Parade will be Saturday, December 4th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. The parade is sponsored by HotRides, which is located at 880 East Bridge Street here in Marsville. And I want to thank Steve Bivins at HotRides for sponsoring the parade and his help. We had no parade last year due to COVID, so we're working diligently to make sure that we have a great parade this year. I will also thank in advance the Marshall Police Department for keeping us safe as the parade winds through the streets of our town while it means the holidays to Marsville. We will line up for the parade at 9:00 a.m. on December 4th at the corner of West Post Road and Ohio Avenue in the church parking lot. The parade will start promptly at 10 o'clock. The route is the same. It will be West Post Road to South Pennsylvania Avenue, to Delaware Avenue, to Washington Street, to North Pennsylvania Avenue, and to West Palmer, and it will end at the high school. And I hope you will all put it on your calendar, find a spot along the route, wave hello, and enjoy. Tonight, I'm going, I'm happy to introduce our Winterfest Court for the parade. Before we make these presentations, I'd like to extend an invitation to all Marshall Borough Council members, new and old, to march with us at the parade. Anyone watching who would like, watching who would like their organization or business to be in the parade, please let us know. There are still spots available. Also, we have a float contest. There is a $25 charge to be, have a float in the contest. The winning float will win $100 cash prize. The one and only Santa will be at the end of the parade, so we need no helpers or participants who dress as Santa, because the real guy will be here. Santa is looking forward to welcoming the holidays to Marsville and to waving to all those who will be along the parade route. Should you need to contact me because you have interest in the parade, my number is 267-566-2199, or you can also get me at Shoto Mom. That's S, I'm sorry, S-H-O-T-O-M-O-M@comcast.net. And with all that being said, we're going to just move on. First, while you guys were in your executive meeting, Junior Mr. Winterfest had to leave. He had a doctor's appointment. So we stood up here in front of all these people and we welcomed him. I do want to read his letter. It was, the letter I received is, "I would like to nominate Jason Zalanka for Mr., for Junior Mr. Winterfest. He's a smart, caring young boy. He loves going to school and to be with friends and with everyone else. He has a great holiday spirit. He loves to share joy and happiness everywhere he goes." Jason Zalanka is age 12 at the Marshall Middle High School in sixth grade, and he is our Junior Mr. Winterfest. Next, we're going to call Melania. Stay right there for now. This is the letter I received about Melania. "I would like to nominate my daughter, Melania Noel Simmers. Melania is fun-loving, super helpful, 10-year-old. Melania is in fifth grade at Marsville. She is maintaining excellent grades. She has been on student government for the last three years to help make school a cooler and better place. She has become a teacher's helper at school, just like at home, where at home we refer to her as mommy Melania. And she is always there to lend a hand with her baby sister or help mom around the house. Throughout a very trying year of COVID, losing her cousin tragically and going through a long adoption of her little sister, Melania has kept being her true-to-herself and being kind to others. Over the summer, Melania did several activities that displayed her acts of kindness. On our summer bucket list, she had put hand out flowers to strangers. So we stood outside Target waiting for who she felt were the right people to give a rose to. It was a very touching activity as everyone she chose told a story of the bad day they had had and how much it had helped. One person asked if they could tip her, and she simply said, "Your smile is my tip. Thank you." Melania also helped us plan our annual popsicle and book party, but this year she asked if it could be in honor of her cousin. He had just discovered the love of reading before we lost him, and she wanted to share his memory with everyone. I could go on and on with the little thoughtful things that Melania does and will randomly do to help others, but there are just a few, these were just a few of our top choices over the last few months. That's what makes me feel that Melania would be an amazing Junior Ms. Winterfest. Well, actually, little Ms. Winterfest. She also has on her, her pin of her cousin, the pastor right, so that she could have him here with her. It's a beautiful photo. See it like, put it in here somehow? Okay? Hey. And each one of them gets a copy of their letter and also a certificate. So I want you to move over here so we can see the picture. Okay. So this is our little Ms. Winterfest. Next is our Junior Ms. Winterfest. And that is Sophie Loffler. Stand there or over there, wherever you want. Okay. She says soccer next. That's fine. The letter that came to us said, "Hi, I would like to nominate an eighth grader from Holy Trinity. Her name is Sophie Loffler. She is an altar server and a member of our choir. The reason I'm choosing to nominate Sophie is because she has the kindest heart of anyone I've known. She has demonstrated her love for others by giving of herself. She always puts others first. This past month, Sophie and two of her siblings took it upon themselves to do a fundraiser to raise money for the food for the poor. Since she realized how many people needed help during the pandemic, she and her siblings made homemade bookmarks and sold them. All profits were donated. She also donated from her own piggy bank. She helped to raise over $700 to feed the needy. Recently, I stopped by her home to purchase a bookmark, and Sophie was trying to rescue some bunnies with her siblings. Sophie is one of nine children. Her parents are Joseph and Bethany, and they have taught all of our children, their children, to be kind and loving. So this is Sophie Loffler, our Junior Ms. Winterfest." This is for you. This one goes to the first. You're a tall one, Sophie. And this is your crown. Oh, and you know who your letter was from? Do you? Ms. Angelina. Let's go over here. So you'll get your picture. Get a picture with mom? Okay? Yep. And our last one is Ms. Winterfest, Zoe Williams. I can just sort out by saying Zoe was one of my color guard when I was the color guard coach, so everything in this letter rings very true. Ms. Winterfest, 2021 nomination. Throughout the past four years that I have been teaching at this wonderful school district, there have been many incredible students to walk these halls. When I think of the students and their representation of Marshall as a whole, one of those students comes to mind. I cannot speak highly enough about our, one of our seniors, Zoe Williams. She always has a smile on her face and genuinely cares about every person she meets. She takes time out of her day to ask how everyone is doing, including her peers and the staff. From volunteering to running fundraiser for her extracurricular activ-, wait, I'm sorry. From volunteering to running fundraisers for her extracurriculars to recruiting and teaching new members of the color guard, Zoe is always eager to do what she can to help others. While we're between, while we were between coaches for color guards, Zoe held the group together, encouraged the young guard members to keep doing their best and to learn their new skills. She is one of the most kind-hearted and compassionate and gentle souls that I have ever come across. Zoe has always been very involved in our school's extracurricular activities. She's the captain of the bowling team, the color guard captain. She's the secretary of both her class office and student government. In addition, Zoe is involved in Reading Olympics, the chess club, and she's the treasurer of the National Honor Society this year. Though her schedule is very busy, Zoe puts all her heart and soul into each and every activity. She also has a part-time job in addition to all of these activities. Because of these responsibilities, she's developed diligent time management skills, communication, organization, and is a model of efficiency. Zoe Williams' work ethic is truly something to be admired. She maintains an excellent GPA while involved in each of these activities and is always looking for a way to improve. She always makes sure to put 100% of her effort into everything she does and goes beyond, above and beyond the expectations time and time again. Zoe embodies what it means to be part of Marsville. She's ambitious and driven, respectful and selfless. She has applied for several colleges to attend after graduation, and I'm sure she will make a strong contribution to any program she chooses. There is no more deserving candidate of Ms. Winterfest Crown than the senior that represents our school and town and everything she does, and that senior is Zoe Williams. And that is... That letter is from her music teacher and band director, Eric Anaros. Here you go. We've got a big one here. Over here, take pictures. Where's my mom? Yeah, I'm going to get them all. Okay, girls, can you come up here, please? Stand on this side, and I'm going to get out of your way. Council members, do you guys want a picture with the girls? Stay right there, they're going to come down and stand with you. I'm going to stand with you.
Picture's that cute.
Fine, my friend, I'm standing with you. Everybody will be married back.
Say Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Say Winterfest. Okay, so this is your 2021 court executive. Now you girls can go home and do your homework. Thank you.
Bye, everybody. See you later.
Ladies and gentlemen, the, we looked at the letter. We thought it came in in August, but actually it came in October the 8th from Mr. Nicole, who's resigned. So he has 45 days. He could change his mind theoretically before we accept it. He hasn't been accepted. So therefore, we have four people. We have, unfortunately, because of the circumstances with the death in the family, we do not legally have a quorum. We would if this, if 45 days had gone by, because four out of seven, four is the majority of seven. But four is not the majority of eight. And therefore, the presentation was wonderful on television, but there's no way that we should be voting on any kind of ordinances, because we need seven days to advertise it in advance for an ordinance. So it would probably have to be the 29th or 30th of this month at the earliest, because you would go after Thanksgiving, I don't think. Much want to meet on Thanksgiving, which I don't think anybody wants to do. So that's, that's my suggestion. And council has two choices. One is they could listen to public comment now, or they could just have, do the other meeting and do it at that time, which makes probably more sense, because it'll be more topical then. But, Mr. President, that's all I have to say about that.
Do we want to wait on public comment? Or do we want to let the public speak?
Mr. Flagler, if the public speaks, is it on the record or not?
Well, I hear what you're saying. It's not, there's not, even though we have technically, we don't have a quorum here, and there's no vote required. Their, their voices will be on the record, because everyone's heard it, it's been recorded, and the majority of the council, four of you here present and two of them on the telephone, will hear them.
But since there's no actual...
But you're not taking any action.
But since there's no actual meeting, there won't be any meeting minutes to...
Correct. Correct.
Put it on the record.
I mean, you can, well, what do you mean, put it on the record? You can put...
Well, I know a lot of people come and speak because they want their, they want their voices on the record.
Well, I don't, I mean, it's not an official meeting, so the answer is probably, you should probably wait. That would be my suggestion. If they want to be totally, I just don't want to, I know people came out in a cold night, and I didn't want to...
I get that. My, my suggestion would be that we unofficially poll the public and see if they would want to talk now or if they'd like to come back. Or allow the ones that can't make it another time or don't think they will to, to voice their opinion.
Mr. Flagler? Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Hold on, hold on. Hold, hold, just a second, just a second, sir. A councilwoman's saying something. Hang on a second, go ahead.
Go ahead, Nancy.
So are you saying that this is not a certifiable meeting where we can actually vote on things?
We can't vote.
I am saying that, yes. I'm saying that you cannot vote on anything this evening. You could listen to presentations, you could listen to the public. You could do all that, but you cannot vote on anything tonight. That is correct.
Okay, so, so does that mean we're going to listen to public adjournments? I, I'm just...
No, what I said is the council could adjourn the meeting at this moment and then reschedule it. Or if council chooses, you know, people, they could, it's up to the council president and the council what they want to do.
Even though it's not a quorum, we still have to, we still have to...
I agree, I mean, I think you should wait to have an official meeting to do that. I think it's proper, but that's my feeling. But I'm, council, if council wants to hear the public, because so many people came out, that's up to them.
Well, I, I will acquiesce to the majority of the council members that are there. I mean, if the public wishes to speak, then it's still their house. So, up to, up to them.
Are we going to reschedule a meeting before December, the December meeting? The last week of the month?
Yeah.
We only, that's the 29th of November?
29th to 30th.
So, in, in my opinion...
Go ahead.
I would just, if the public wants to speak, I'd let them speak, but they should just know it's not official. I mean, they came out... Unless they don't want to, but we'll probably have another meeting on the 29th where everyone is welcome to come back. Oh. Tuesday the 30th, my, my bad.
Depending on the advertisement date, because we have to make sure that you can advertise it timing with the newspaper. Thursday or Friday would be their days off, so we have to make sure we can get this to... And I have to early find out when Mr. Yeager can be here. I need to find out when the council members can be here so we can definitely have a quorum. So I need a consensus before we could advertise. It will be advertised and it'll be on the borough, you know, sites.
I'm okay with the 30th.
I apologize, I thought it was on.
Well, actually, at this point, it's a discussion among council to set another date, so. We can't make a motion, we have to hold. Is there, is there, one, one minute, Nancy. Is everyone okay with the 30th?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Um, okay, I am, Nancy, are you okay with the 30th?
Yeah, I was going to say, any date's fine, as long as I'm not...
Yes. Scott, are you still there?
We can't hear you, Scott.
Yes.
We have to do it in November, right?
Yes.
Okay, Thursday, the second would be perfect, but, I mean, I...
I won't be here on the second, so.
I'll probably have to call in, that's, that's...
Okay.
Two business days into Black Friday, and I'm a GPS driver. So that's going to be a little...
All right. All right, so we're okay with rescheduling that meeting to the 30th? Is, um...
Just once, then we can...
Seven minutes, Nancy, we'll be fine. We'll be up there. We got to jump on it tomorrow, we'll be fine.
All right. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight, even though it's not going to be on, on the official record? All right, Ms. Rafferty, you can go first. Three minutes.
Molly Rafferty, 123 Delaware Avenue. I came here tonight to talk about fireworks, planes, trains, lawn mowers, and trash trucks. They are all very loud, and I think that they should be prohibited because I am entitled to a silent neighborhood. That was a joke, just like your attempt at prohibiting roosters is a joke. Last month, I referred to the rooster issue as a Hatfield and McCoy feud. Later that evening, some of you tried to discredit my statement, so tonight, I brought the proof. Right here, the official rooster complaints from the last 12 months. All complaints are from one woman complaining about her one neighbor, isolated. And on August 25th, 2021, word two council members were made aware of a possible animal abuse situation. Curious if either of you ever contacted animal control? If not, why? Is it because it was a rooster or... Also, on August 25th, code enforcement said in an email, quote, "I do drive by daily, and I have not heard roosters in about a week." And on the 30th, code again wrote, quote, "To be honest, the cicadas were louder than anything else on the property." Want to hear how Marsville residents feel about roosters? I brought that too. It's a Facebook post from last summer... It's a Facebook post from last summer. A resident bought new chicks to update their flock. One turned out to be a rooster. They created a post on Facebook within the community to ask everyone how they felt, if the crowing would bother anyone, et cetera. 109 people liked the post, and 64 people commented, all in favor of keeping the rooster. Some of the comments, I wish I can hear it. If I was your neighbor, I'd love it. Keep him, he's beautiful. Hope you can keep him, there are dogs in my neighborhood that bark a lot. I'd rather hear a rooster than the fireworks. How is a borough going to defend potential lawsuits? Contrary to obnoxious spending, there's no money tree behind Borough Hall. We're in between having an EIT implemented, or letting two police officers go, yet here we are regulating chickens. Anything but focusing on the actual issues, is that how this works? The majority of council agreed to hold a policy ordinance meeting in regards to roosters. You talked a good line about it, but for the record, that meeting never took place. Text messages, phone calls, in-person rooster complaining, you could do it until your battery died, or you were blue in the face. It's not directed to code enforcement, you're not following proper protocol. And I will be here next month to support the bees, as I hear you're now trying to prohibit beekeeping in the borough.
Three minutes, thank you.
Death and taxes are inevitable. Regulating roosters is optional. Choose wisely. Thank you. And then I have copies for everyone to look over.
Who else wants to speak this evening? Who's Daniel McCleary?
Daniel McCleary, 53 Delaware Avenue. Good evening, my name is Daniel McCleary. I'm an 18-year-old who lives here within Morrisville, and I have my whole entire life. When I was in third grade, my family had to make the very typical decision to have me leave schooling at Morrisville School District in favor of doing my school online. Our reasoning was that Morrisville did not provide me with competitive education. I easily aced all of my assignments, and despite being in the gifted program, I was still not challenged. This is a problem that I know is not unique to me. I know others close to me in my grade level who have not had competitive education either, all the way through high school. I've heard stories of classrooms sitting back and watching movies all day even. This is a problem that stems from the massive budgeting issues within Morrisville Borough, leading to cuts in teachers and drastic consolidation of jobs. I've come tonight in support of the proposed redevelopments at Williston Park. Redeveloping a piece of land so unique to our town, such as this park, is not an easy decision to make, as I understand. I'm very sure you are all aware of this. But unless something is done, our tax rates are going to continue to go up. In providing a brand-new and competitive business center in our town, there will not be a need to escalate tax rates any more than we already have. As part of the next generation in Morrisville myself, I don't want to bear that burden. None of you should want your children to bear that burden. And from seeing posts on varying Facebook groups, I know none of you want to either. The only way we can break this cycle is by making these hard decisions. People aren't going to be happy either way this proposal goes. But I sincerely believe that it is right to redevelop part of Williston Park. I wish that I was able to stay in attending Morrisville School District. However, stemming from a lack of funds in the school as caused by budget issues, that was not possible. If I wanted to gain an education, that challenged me and caused me to grow. I hope you all will see the impact that your outcome will have on my generation, as well as generations to follow. And I hope that you will decide what you believe to be most sensible going forward for the sake of our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farrell, do you wish to speak?
Will Farrell, 347 North Pennsylvania Avenue.
Three minutes.
I've been a resident since 1974. I, I used to come to borough council meetings, at which time a number of the people sitting up there, some are here, used to make inflammatory remarks about me. I'm not a very sensitive people, person, so I just want you to know that I will return when the COVID thing is over. I will also return next month. I would also like to speak about the project down here. I am an umpire. I've been an umpire since 1974. I do baseball. I did baseball for 15 years, years ago. I played lowly. I'm still an official. I still do softball and do chains. The project down here, the gentleman is going to invest money into that project. He is going to build new fields, that there's complaint about taking up too much of the park. The park numerous times has been flooded. Numerous times, it has been flooded. It's a flood zone down there. I've seen it, I've been there. I've been there after we've had heavy rains, and it's still flooded. The fields are muddy, the grass is wet and all of that stuff. All I'm saying is I, the earning income tax, I'm, I'm in favor of it. Somebody said there was a very wall. Well, there's a big jump ahead of you. That's the EIT, and you're going to smack that wall head-on. You may get hurt, you may not get, not. Some people have hard heads. I wish you luck. So, if you go to hospital, I hope you get well soon, and everybody have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartz?
Jim Schwartz, 580 Rosemore Drive.
Three minutes.
I don't know if this is recorded, if people see this on TV. If not, I'll be back here on the 29th and 30th and say it again. I'm really proud of this borough. I had so much support from all four boroughs, who loved me, who cared for me, who donated, who helped to, uh, I just didn't realize the kind of people that really are in this town. And there's some good, good people in this town. I want to thank the board. Most of y'all showed up, wished me well. At the poll, that was very cool. Y'all didn't have to do that, but you did, and I, Scott, and Helen, and Paul, you just blessed me so much, I just can't tell you. I'm gonna make this short and sweet, but I really want to thank the council president. I want to thank Ted. In May, he and I didn't hit it all very well, but in November, I called Ted a friend. He taught me so much about the borough, about politics. He answered every question I had. He didn't back down, not once, because he cares about the borough. And I know you won't be here later in the month, so I'm gonna brag on you. You deserve it. You have the hardest job here in the borough, and that's trying to orchestrate this whole, sometimes monkey fest, or whatever you want to call it, or a blessing fest, or whatever. It goes, I've been here for seven months now. I've lived here since 63. You were 74. My family's been here since 63. My uncle and aunt been here since 61. I have seen, I've played on every one of those ball fields. But you know what? What, 85% of the people who use our fields don't live in our borough? That bothers me. When our borough can't meet its bills, that bothers me, okay? Those are real issues. We have to fix them and do it right. We have to support our police. And by the way, chief, thanks to many of your people who supported me. The entire fire department supported me. These people need to see that we respect them. We need to protect our police. We need to protect our fire people, and we need to protect the borough. But Ted, I just want to tell you one more time, brother, you made a huge impact on my life over these last seven months, and I will never forget you, and I thank you, and God bless the borough. Let's do what's right for the borough. Forget about everybody else. If you don't live here, shut your mouth and let the borough people run the borough. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Pesci?
I'll wait.
Okay, okay. Laura Grok? Grok, sorry.
I'm here to talk about the- The possible development of the area known as the island, which is where I live, right alongside the bridge. It's where the baseball fields are, and it's where there's the possibility of building condos and other things that many people want due to the tax purposes that they have in mind. For my part, I am still deeply, deeply disturbed and worried about the fact that that island is built on rubbish and trash. You can see in those pictures that the water ran through there, and it was an island for many, many, many years. My husband, who first moved there in the 60s to the island, talks about dumping trash down at the place nearest to the road, and that went on for years. Years before he got there, and years after he got there, they were still dumping trash. So what we have is, we have a bunch of surveyors out there. I watched them every day for a long time, surveying the heck out of that place, but none of them put a drill in the ground. None of them did any attempt to figure out if there was anything down there that would make it another surfside, where we would end up with our condos down on the ground. So that's what I'm concerned about, and I will leave it at that. You have the maps. For anybody else who wants a map, I have a few left, and I will be glad to give you one. Thank you.
Don Rice? You want to speak? Yeah. You have three minutes.
Don Rice, 343 Crown Street. This is just an abbreviated comment. First, I have a question for your councilman, Mr. Flager. There are two council members that are on the phone, correct? That's six council members. Isn't that a quorum?
Yeah.
Because the Sunshine Act allows participation in a meeting by phone. It is permitted.
The borough code, though, you have to have a physical quorum, and then, and others can then be on the phone.
So you're saying the borough code supersedes the Sunshine-
Yeah, the borough code, the borough code, look, we would love to have a meeting tonight.
I understand. I was confused.
The borough code specifically says we must have a physical quorum, and then, once we do, then everybody else could be virtual and participate.
Did you ever change that when the governor had the COVID regulations in place? And you had to meet by-
Right.
If you recall, the legislature-
Right.
-overrode the governor. There was a-
I understand the regulations, they're not-
And they took away some of that, and we had to, we were back to the borough code.
Okay.
Yeah, unfortunately, I mean, okay, I would love to be able to have this count as a meeting.
All right. I agree. Um, I just, the only thing I wanted to add is that you've named me as the litigant on the suit. That is correct, but there are 10 other litigants as well. I am just the first one named. That is all.
Okay. Mary Herenda? I cannot make out the name. It's Mike from 20 North Pennsylvania Avenue. Okay. Debbie Cogan? You gonna speak? No? Okay. Jane Berger?
Good evening. Jane Berger, 90, I stepped on my address, 90 West April Avenue in Morrisville. Just a clarification, I thought there was a public notice for a public hearing regarding the preliminary budget for 6 o'clock tonight that was published. Was that rescinded? Did I, did I miss that? Because I didn't see the notice. I was here at 6, but I'm back at 7. Just a couple of things on that. It's a difficult task. I know the last budget meeting, Mr. Yeager did have some suggestions that some seemed to be in line with, to look at. That probably doesn't solve all of the, the concerns, but I want to speak again to the idea of the tax anticipation loan. The only one on council, although by phone this evening, Mr. Sherlock, was on council when we had to do that for decades. You needed money to cover your bills until the tax money came in in April, and municipalities would get a loan for the amount that they thought they needed, less any incoming revenues. It was a one-year loan, it had to be paid back in December, and of course, when you borrow money, there is some interest to do that. The borough did that until the point where they sold the annex building, which is now the courthouse, and that $400,000 was put in a tax anticipation fund, TAN fund, that we would use that, that would cover the expenses, and we no longer needed to go to the bank to get the loan. Hearing now, that obviously sadly is not sufficient. So in addition to the fund, any revenues you know for sure are coming in, I heard that you're using the capital reserve line to cover those expenses. And although your money comes in basically by June, I'm hearing that, that, that money, which is for vehicles, which is for computers, things that are in the resolution, can't be done, because you're going to have to need that money come the following January. So when you look at your budget issues, I'm asking you to consider going to the bank to find out what the interest would be, and what the amount would need to borrow, what you take from the capital reserve fund, the 200,150, whatever it is, and borrow that. Because that fund is an operating fund, and I really am concerned that it's being used as a tax fund and rolling over every year to cover bills, and not being used for its cost. And one of the things that comes out of that fund is the police vehicle. And for 17 years on council, there was only one year, we did not buy a new police car, and we budgeted for half of it, and the following year, we made up for it. You need to rotate at least one police car every year, because they are used hard. So nobody likes to take a loan, but it certainly is something that's been done for decades, and you may need to look at that to make sure that the capital reserve fund is used for what it's intended. So I have an agenda and a minute from 1996 and 1997 to show in December there are motions to pay back those bank loans.
Three minutes.
And I'll share that with you. I kept all my minutes. Couldn't find all the financial reports. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Okay. I believe it's Graham Thompson? Okay. Deb Freeman? Okay. Elizabeth Lester Abadella?
She left.
She left? Okay. Joshua Kuntz? Three minutes, sir.
Yeah, I'll need to do the name stuff, right?
Huh?
I'll need to do the name stuff.
Uh, you know, we're not official, so you don't have to.
Yeah, yeah, cool. So, let's see. First off, those meetings, the finance meetings, were a riot, man. I feel sorry for everybody. I really, I'm thankful for what everybody was going through in those meetings. It's a tough situation, for sure. Certainly entertaining, if only from a very far away, when I'm not actually thinking about how tough they are. Though, something did kind of come to my mind about the EIT, the finance thing. I don't know if this is an option, but since there is a, since we already did a vote, I was in favor of that personally, of it being implemented, because obviously, there was money going outside of the borough that I thought could be really useful. It seemed like there's a lot of people who didn't really understand the actual transaction was supposed to be about, and maybe that there was some better information now that more things have been discussed. But as an option, I don't even know if this is something that we can do. Is it possible that we can make a exception where if people are, like, kind of like adopt half of it? Where if somebody is already being charged the amount that they are, they're taxed from outside the community, if the people who already are, if that gets implemented internally, and then just allow it for like, some people to opt out, if they're that passionate about it? There's no like compromise we can do? It has to be like the whole thing? That sucks. All right, well, I would like to at least vote a voice that I think that we should do. All right, well, I would like to at least vote a voice that I think that we should do a recount on that and try and get more people in another presentation, because the, if there's a silver bullet for the situation, that definitely seems like one that could do some damage, positive damage, healing damage, just healing silver bullet for the community. So that's one thing. Second, I hope that it doesn't come off whenever I talk to you guys, and I'm trying to ingratiate myself with you. I think that that's kind of poor taste, and that I am actually just trying to encourage the community and the wholeness of everybody. So that's why I usually say, you know, things about philosophy and ethics and how that this is a long lineage of, you know, our civilization. This is not to kind of get me brownie points or anything, but it's just kind of establish that we're all on the same team, which is authentically what we need to be looking at this, even when we disagree with people. And third, if anybody's interested in educating themselves on a different perspective on how infrastructure impacts things and the longer-term impacts of these kinds of developments, I suggest a YouTube channel called Not Just Bikes from an individual who has lived throughout the world and specializes in kind of hobby of educating himself on how long-term things and investments impact communities, such as how in America in particular, we're basically a pyramid scheme when it comes to development, which is we expand, and then we expand more to pay for the thing that we already expanded for. And so as we continue that cycle, that vicious cycle of needing to expand and expand and expand, it actually impoverishes other things and destroys other infrastructure. So even though it might seem like a temporary solution now, it's actually really not good later on. And as a person who, this is, I'm not old, nor am I young, but I've seen this happen before. I've lived long enough to see this occur, and it might be worthwhile for people who might not have lived this already to educate themselves on things longer than their own lifespan.
Three minutes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Gina Tenzero, Tenzero, sorry. Okay. Noel Sperry?
Good evening, council. Noel Sperry, 531 Prospect Avenue, Morrisville. I'm here on behalf of the Morrisville Business Association tonight. I just want to let everybody know that on November 27th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., if it's drizzled, we will be doing the Morris, the cleanup and decoration of the Robert Morris Plaza for Christmas or the holiday season. Everyone is welcome to come out and help out. I encourage councilmen, please be there. It's a great way to say thank you to your businesses that are here in town. Same thing for everybody in town. You're more than welcome to come out and help out. The more the merrier, because many hands make a, make light work of a very heavy project. So all I ever ask is bring some festive headwear, like a, you know, I'll have my Santa hat as I normally do, but bring out whatever you feel like, and bring out your work gloves, and everything else will be provided. We actually have a lot of decorations to put up this year, so please come out and help out. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien still here? Jackie Carroll? Okay. All right, are we adjourned or are we just... Oh, I did pass it. I'm sorry, sir. I did. Go ahead, sir. Sorry about that, I passed right over you.
No problem. First of all, I want to say I understand where other people are coming from on the Williamson Park situation. I'm a father, I have my son here today. He goes to Grandview Elementary School here in Morrisville. One of the reasons I bought my home in Morrisville was that beautiful park. It's a great place. We visit there all the time. We don't play baseball. I have no investment in the baseball fields at all. I have investments in a green space that neither my son can walk through, that we can ride our tricycles and our scooters and our bikes through. It is a beautiful spot. My wife and I both ride our bikes through town, walk the tow path. It's a gorgeous spot, and it would be awful to lose one of the few green spaces we still have in our town. I'm not an eloquent speaker. I'm awkward, I don't have notes. All I want to say is that seizing that land and selling it to a development when it was specifically given as a trust to preserve a green space is the exact opposite of why we have laws to stop that. That's, that's it. I love the town, I love the people in this town. I want it to prosper, but I don't see a way in which taking away a park to give a tax break to a developer and all of that, it just, it breaks my heart. That's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And you did well, by the way. All right, so we're going to adjourn, and we're tentatively set for the 30th... ...of this month for our next meeting. I can let the public... Thank you, everyone. It'll be advertised.